Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, January 8th, 2020 Town Council meeting. We can all rise for the pledge.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized? Excellent. All right, now to number three. We have the approval of the minutes from the December 18th, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I want to change part of that. There's a vote taken, of which I abstained on the second part of one of those votes. I want to, for the record, I should have the record show that I abstained on the second vote regarding school improvement. I believe that was the vote. I'll have a copy of the minutes.
That's the yearbook?
I think so. Yep, I think so.
Yearbook in the project graduation funding?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to have that.
Six oh one.
Thank you.
So we can make a motion to approve amended, as amended?
Just a matter of point of issue. I see here where we're going to correct something that we did last week. If that's in last week's minutes...
No.
It isn't?
No.
No, I understand that. But if it's in last minutes, last week's minutes, do we correct it then or do we correct it now?
We correct it now. We correct it now.
Very good. Just want to bring that point up. Thank you.
So a motion to approve the December 18th minutes as amended?
So moved. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to number four, which is the appointments. So we have the appointments for the school building committee. I'll accept a motion to approve Marianne O'Donnell, Superintendent of Schools, William Watkins, Public Works Assistant Director, and we're going to add also Gonzalo Carrion.
Correct.
Okay. So there's a motion to accept those appointments?
Make a motion that we accept Marianne O'Donnell, Superintendent of Schools, William Watkins, Public Works Assistant Director, and Gonzalo Carrion, who is the Chief of Maintenance for the Board of Education, to the School Building Committee in charge of the roofs.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? To number, oh, okay. So now we're going to talk about the Inland Wetlands Commission. So Tanya Abbottello was put forth for a full seat at one of the prior meetings. At the time, the seat that she was going to fill as a full seat was not vacant. What had happened was the individual that was vacating that seat had submitted a resignation letter that it said the end of the year, didn't have a specific date, so it was entered into the blue book, effective as the date that they got it in October. So unfortunately, her seat, or the seat that she was looking to get onto, was not vacant. So at the time, there was a vacant seat for an alternate seat. I have spoken with Eric. We've discussed it a little bit. So she's acceptable to take the alternate seat. So at this point, we just need a motion to appoint her to the alternate seat on inland wetlands for the term of 6/30/2023.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we can. Discussion, Mr. Chair. What could we do to avoid this type of thing in the future?
Yep.
Because I was led to believe that it was in fact an open seat, maybe an updating of the blue book, maybe the town website is, you know, things of that nature.
So we've had a conversation with Sharon in the Town Clerk's office and Mary as well, and we're basically just going to try to see what we can do. I mean, our opinion is we try to make it a live document somehow, some way, post it to the website. The website has struggles, obviously. You know, the usage for the website and, you know, it's not very user-friendly, I guess is what people say. So that's one of the things we have to look at, but making it a live document and somehow posting it to the website so that people know and have access to that document. Because right now, I mean, it's on Sharon. You know, and it's like, you know, who does it go to? You know, all these things have to be discussed. You know, each party, Green, Republicans, Democrats, or just anybody in general should have access to that blue book. So we have had those discussions and we're going to continue to have and try to figure out a way that we can kind of, you know, make this more readily accessible to everybody in town. Because you are right. I mean, it's unfortunate what happened, but, you know, it's an honest mistake. It wasn't anybody's. You know, it was just how things are right now, and we need to find a way to kind of make things more user-friendly.
Well, I did speak with her last night. She attended as an alternate.
Yep.
And is going to enjoy her time there, so thank you.
Okay. So a motion to just to appoint her to that alternate seat? A second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Move on to number five, which is Pearson Future Use Committee report. We just got, everybody just got a copy of the, I guess, the Shrett findings. Christine, you want to talk to, I guess, kind of what came about from that committee?
All right. So what I'm going to do is, and if you'll just entertain me, I'll go through all the points first, and then I can raise questions afterward. You can do that. So I'll go through just the general futures committee, the timelines, just a general timeline, some of the legal aspects, the public input consideration, which are the results that you have in front of you that were provided at the last Pearson meeting, and then next steps or recommendations. So just to start out, the Pearson Futures Committee was formed last summer, and it's comprised of approximately nine people from Planning and Zoning, Board of Education, EDC, the Morgan Trust, civic and historic-minded persons, so is myself, Kristi Pontillo, Donnie Hanson, Heidi Hayes, Mary LaPone, Carol Walter, Mary Ellen Dollgren, Mike Hornick, and John Allen. So our first meeting, as I said, was last summer, and we were formed to look at the potential sale or reuse of the building. We created aggressive timeline of 18 months for the transition of the building. The November 2019, the property was turned over from the Board of Education to the town. And we also conducted the charrette, led by CERC, Connecticut Economic Resource Center, who prepared and facilitated the program. The gymnasium is currently being used by the Park and Recreations facilities. We are short right now, both from Board of Education and then also Parks and Recreation, trying to find facilities for sports use. Since the Morgan, the old Morgan School closed, we lost the gymnasium, and now with this school closing. And that will be through March 2020. And we also have a working draft of the next step in cost estimates that have been part of the Future Use Committee's work. And those are within the minutes, and we can provide them again to this committee if anybody needs them. From a legal standpoint, currently, there's two, not necessarily issues, but two things pertaining to the transition of the property. The Morgan Trust, which Morgan Trust had donated part of the property to the town for its use, and they technically own that portion of land, and it's partially underneath the building. So right now, the town is working with the Morgan Trust to determine that transition of land. And then there's also the other aspect, which is called a side pray, and it's the action the town is taking with the Attorney General's Office to lift the covenant on the property for the moral education we use of the land. That would allow any future use of the building to broaden, and currently, it's very narrow in scope. So those two actions are currently being taken, and there's more conversation to be had in the future recommendations. Within the charrette, which is a public input session, the considerations which rose to the top were substantial, interest in long-term tax base for the property, so something that's going to generate revenue to the town. People were very interested in making sure the facade is kept, the gazebo is kept in the statues. So something, if the property were to transition to a private company or some sort of organization, something would be need to be written into that ownership document so that the town could maintain use of the gazebo and make sure the statues are maintained. As for the facade, there's tax credits for the facade because it is a historic building. It would behoove most developers to keep that facade for that reason, unless there's substantial issues with the building long-term that they really can't use or facilitate the building, and it would have to be demolished, and therefore, some, something would need to be done in terms of the town and its relationship to a future developer, whether or not they would allow that. So again, that would have to be something written into a contract if the building was transitioning to a private organization. More interest as well for, well, overwhelming support for some sort of multi-generational facility and multi-use facility. That would be something that would allow for a community center, but then also allow to rent out portions of the building to private organizations, nonprofits, et cetera. Probably need to do some sort of cost-benefit analysis for that, as well as there's interest in having the library moved to Pearson. And again, that would have to encompass a cost-benefit analysis for that. So again, community center, strong interest for a community center in often much of multi-uses. Senior housing did come up as well. There's some challenges to senior housing because the state statute does not allow for age restriction, so you're not going to be able to work within the state components of grants and some of the organizations that state would support that type of facility. You could work with some of the local agency. There is whole partnership. There's a lot of banks that help cobbled together these types of programs to create senior housing. So that is another consideration. Lastly, we would recommend keeping Pearson open, both for keeping activity in the downtown, but also when you have a building closed up, it becomes a nuisance and could become problematic. So recommendation would be to find some short-term uses and to keep it open. You know, obviously, we're using it right now for sports use. Perhaps we can start renting out space, creating pop-ups. There was discussion whether or not there was some need for office space in that building, and that might come into discussions on capital transitions within this fiscal year 2021 budget. In terms of next steps and recommendations, some of the things that are still out there are whether or not we're going to move forward with the wastewater capacity study on the site, and that would be a boost to transition to a private entity. That would help move the property along much more quickly, similar to what we did with the Unilever property. We had gotten the grant for wastewater capacity study that helped the developer determine whether or not they're interested in investing in that property or not. We're looking for recommendations on marketing feasibility at this time. I would not recommend that from our committee standpoint. It really is, again, if it's going to be a multi-use and public use as well, you don't necessarily need a marketing feasibility study. My engagement with the community who does these types of studies strongly feels that you should move along with the building. There are so many of these properties out there right now, schools are closing. You should just either put it on the market or start utilizing it the way you want to. The studies are a little bit inconclusive, I would say, at this time because of the number or the glut of schools that are on the market right now. And you can also look to what's happening in Madison as well with their building. We should continue to be looking for grants, both for maintenance of the building because it is historic, but then also for those public-private partnership opportunities. We would recommend that start to draft a request for proposal based on some of these uses that would be a private venture. Although, we wouldn't put it out for bid at this time, but it might be an opportunity to start to focus direction, but to have that draft created. Question whether or not we want to continue to get public input on the property or not, or whether to move forward, and that goes along with question whether or not the Pearson Future Use Committee needs to continue or not. At this time, there are no further meetings scheduled. And other recommendation would be for the town manager, do you have some meetings with the bulk of Morgan Trust, and continue with the side pray and update council on that. And also looking at meeting with local groups on senior housing and opportunities for public private partnerships. So that would be a question whether or not a committee would be formed to look at that use and need within the community as well. Also, meeting with commercial real estate companies to assess the capacity for that building and the need, or whether there is interest in renting out space. And then also, the town meeting with property management companies if we were to rent out that space. Currently, the question would be whether the town has the capacity, both staffing-wise to be managing the company from the facility standpoint, but then also handling contracts, et cetera. So that's essentially where we are at this point. If anybody has any questions?
Christine, two questions. Is there any reason to believe the Attorney General's Office would not grant us a revision of the covenant?
The last meeting we had with the Attorney General's Office, they were fairly confident it would be lifted. It's fairly standard procedure for them. It just is a long process.
And then the wastewater capacity test and the grants that are afforded us for that, are those pretty readily available?
I have not looked into whether the grants have come up again. That would be a question, just looking, you know, the line on the state website and see what's available for them. They're usually under DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development. And there's other potential make grants under, maybe under historic, we can look into, but I think it would behoove the town to have that question answered to help move it along quickly.
Anybody else with questions? All right. Thank you, Christine.
I think ultimately, the Pearson Future Use Committee, and obviously, maybe not this meeting, but at some point, will need to know what the recommendations are for the committee and whether or not there's any other work that needs to be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point, I think it would kind of probably benefit everybody, obviously, with having Carl on board now and having some input from him as the town manager as far as what we're going to do there. I think as far as, you know, what we do going forward is the council taking back control over this sort of system and process and getting Carl kind of up to speed on what's going on, getting some input on, you know, on his end, and then maybe reconvening a new committee at that point, that the council at that point appoints, you know, a new committee for that. So I mean, that would kind of be sort of my thinking on this whole process. Obviously, we need some input from Carl, and, you know, and I think it, you know, it did have a very good impact on kind of what we're trying to do here. So getting him up to speed, obviously, he's new to this. I mean, it's day three here, so just throw something else at him to get involved in.
Carl has a unique background, being part of the housing authority.
Right. So that's, you know, that's the very big impact. So I think, you know, it behooves us to do that. So kind of take this back on the council side now, obviously, you know, that we're seated here. Get him involved, get him up to speed, and then kind of work through the next steps in the coming meetings. Anybody else comments on that?
No, I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So we will then keep this open and then discuss this at the, you know, the coming meetings. All right. Next item is the Accept the Historic Documents Preservation Grant in the amount of $5,500. Everybody has a copy of the grant? Before we kind of go through all this, does anybody have any questions on the grant or what it's covering or what it's entailing? If nobody has that, then basically, we're just looking for a motion to accept that grant? Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation?
This is, this happens almost annually, I guess.
I can apply for grant, the first cycle is free money to the town for matching grants. It's not taxed off of rent.
Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of the motion to accept the Historic Documents Preservation Grant in the amount of $5,500?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. All right. Item number seven is the Stanton House Lease Agreement. This was handled by Pete when he was here. So everybody has a copy of that lease as well. So we're just looking for a motion to approve as presented.
Change the date.
Change the date. Add the date. Yeah. Okay.
It says 2019.
All right. Okay. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. All right. The next is the resolution. Number eight, which is the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Clinton authorizing the town manager to perform certain duties in lieu of the first selectman. I will read it, and then we can make a motion to approve. So the resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Clinton authorizing the town manager to perform certain duties in lieu of the first selectman. Whereas the Town of Clinton has approved numerous resolutions authorizing appropriations and bond authorizations for various capital projects over the years, and whereas the resolutions include provisions authorizing the first selectman or a majority of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer to take various actions, including but not limited to, to issue and sell temporary notes in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds from the sale of such bonds and determine the amount, date, date of maturity, interest rate, form, and other details of such notes or bonds pursuant to Chapter 109 of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended, the charter or any other provision of the law thereto enabling, provided that the proceeds from the sale of such notes shall be used for said purposes, to sign bonds or notes by either manual or facsimile signatures, to designate a bank or trust company to be certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, paying agent of the bonds or notes, sell the bonds or notes at public or private sale, deliver the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary to appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. And when the bonds or notes authorized by the resolution are to be issued on a taxed-exempt basis, by the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as deemed necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years collectively for selectman duties. And whereas the town approved a revised charter effective as of November 19th, 2019, which provides for a town manager, Town Council Form of Government, and eliminate the position of Board of First Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen. And whereas the town now desires to have the town manager replace the first selectman in the performance of the first selectman duties, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to perform the first selectman duties in lieu of the first selectman as set forth in the resolution. Okay? Motion to approve?
So, I move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just have one here. Where it said that, up in the top, it said that with the majority of the Board of Selectmen. So that, of course, there is no longer a Board of Selectmen. And the new resolution does the same thing about the council or majority of the council. So in other words, all these powers now will just be in the hands of the town manager. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I want noted for the...
Yeah, okay.
That, you know, the Town Council doesn't have to do a majority of this or anything else.
Okay.
This is all town manager.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. All right. Chairman's reports. Not much to update, really. We're going to be doing a bond call this afternoon. And so we did do some economic development follow-up that we had to do in order to prepare for all that stuff, so I can kind of get you some updates on the Morgan, the old Morgan site. We spoke to John Gazowski, and there are some dates now that are going to be set in place as soon as April for some dates that need to be met for one of the major tenants that's part of that project. So they're kind of making a push that they get some permits and things that are completed by April to kind of move forward on that project. So that's where they are with that. They're still discussing, you know, other things that are going to be put into that. I know they went in front of Inland Wetlands last night and had some discussions over there. So that's where the Morgan site is, the Unilever site. Talked to Carl about that. We'll be discussing some abatements as it relates to that, so we'll be getting with the developer on that to discuss those in the near future. He has set a name. It's called Stations Landing at Clinton. There's a website that's up and running that he sent to me, which is a marketing piece that he's had. The turf field is going forward. That's been through planning and zoning. Kingsman Brewery is in that marketing piece, so it's now public knowledge that they're going to be involved in the project over there. So those are kind of the two major things that we've, you know, kind of updates as far as where we are with that. Other than that, basically, just start tackling all the other things that we're going to need to tackle going forward. Now that Carl's here, obviously, the things that he'll be handling, I think it's going to give us the opportunity to start putting pen to paper and do some of these policies and having things in writing so that for our purposes and going forward, it's all there. There seems to be a lot of, that's the way we've always done it, kind of things, and I think we need to kind of move ourselves away from that. And that's nobody's fault. It's just kind of the way it's been. And I think now that we have a professional manager of the town that can come in and handle those certain things that that job entails, I think it's very important for us on this side to kind of start working through those things and getting everybody's involvement on how things should be handled to make it, you know, user-friendly, let's say. So there's a lot of items that'll be coming up in the very near future, and those are things that we'll be discussing. All right. Anybody have any questions? All right. Next is the town manager report.
So as was noted earlier, today's day three.
He's good to go? And he's still here? He showed up.
So some of that is still drinking from the fire hose, trying to get my arms around what's happened and sort of where the town is, and then trying to go forward. The budget is obviously going to be the biggest piece of where we are on a forward-going basis. I've got some middlestrand departments asking for more detail to support what will become my review and then materials that would be distributed to the Town Council for what will become ultimately your review. So we're trying to figure out a calendar right now for sequence of events. Because the change in the former government eliminates the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and fuses that together in the Town Council, the budget that gets presented to you is the town manager's budget, which would include town expenses, debt service and capital, as well as the Board of Education budget. So we'll be coordinating with the Board of Ed for when the superintendent's budget will be able to be fused into ours, time that for a formal presentation to the Town Council, give you the budget books. It starts with my budget at that time, it starts with having your budget. So we'll need availability for budget workshops for the council to start going through the review process. I guess in the past, you've done it over four days, so it's really what's a matter of your time commitment to go through the budget and sort of, we can discuss where things are, methodology for what the manager decided for provisions from department asks to what's being recommended, and then further revisions and policy direction would ensue from there. So we'll be reaching out, trying to get some dates for what makes sense. We can start to cobble together a calendar for everyone, make sure that's available. I'm assuming the workshops will be televised, and we'll make the budget available online, as well as some hard copies at the library, Town Clerk's office, Town Manager's office, so that if the public wants to look at a hard copy, which may be in some cases easier to read, something will be available to the general public to pick up. I guess one act of good news from the prior council, received a letter from the governor yesterday awarding the $7,000 Open Space Grant that the town applied for previously. Goes for Lot 30, which I'm assuming was something that means more to you than it does to me, which is part of the Shoreline Greenway Trail. So now that we've got the state grants, we'll be getting more instructions on moving forward and closing on the acquisition. I also have CCM's 2020 State Legislative Program. I can give it to you if you want it. I'm not sure it's something I would spend a lot of time with now. It's the short session. The General Assembly will have to be a little bit more focused. Generally, thematically, we should be watching what's going to happen with budget revisions for what that means for the town. I'm not sure what bandwidth the state's going to have for any aggressive modifications of legislation normally that takes place in the long session. So we'll, as things evolve, I'll keep you informed as we get reconnaissance in terms of what's going on up and up under the Gold Dome. And I would be remiss in saying I appreciate the efforts of Peter Neff as interim manager. It's very helpful. I even had a series of meetings with Peter. it's very helpful, I came in and had a series of meetings with Peter to kind of get my arms around the organization, where things are at, and it was, it was very beneficial to have Peter's experience and then be able to pick his brain and get an understanding of how things have been done here. In the future, you'll get a written report from me once it's get beyond day three, and I hope that that will have more informative information for you that you can find value in going forward. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then we can move on to a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hang on, just one second.
Yeah?
I don't know, I don't see in our agenda thing where council members that are on different committees would have a report, but I just thought I'd throw a little plug in, if you, if you will. Last week, the roofing committee did meet last Friday, and we appointed a chair, that would be Michael Horniac will be the chair of that roofing committee, that we put three other members on today. We have a very aggressive calendar schedule so that we can accomplish the improvements to both schools, the Joel and the Elliott schools during the summer, like we did last year. So to do that, we'll be moving right along, and I just wanted to say that, of course, the approved bonding package for this project will be $2,780,000. And so we will be, of course, very diligent, shall I say, to ensure that we come in on the budget, as the last roofing projects did about a year ago. And so I just wanted to give you that report that they are moving, and I think at my next meeting or the meeting after, I will have a lot more details than just what the exact calendar is, but we do plan to have interviews of our architects somewheres in the end of January, possibly around January 27th. So we're going to be moving on quite aggressively to accomplish our mission. So I just thought I'd throw that little-
Thank you, Dennis.
Plug in.
Thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second? Any discussion about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.